To order our, Director Moore Alderman, regular meeting at 6:58. If I can get a roll call, please, Tara.
Alderman Borman?
Yes.
Alderman Hudson?
Here.
Alderman Motley? Alderman Wilkins?
Present.
Alderman Rogers?
Present.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Right, if I can get everybody to stand up. Roll call vote, yeah, roll call.
They're gonna get that.
Okay.
Alright, we need to, I need, I want to make a motion that the item, that we amend the agenda under item B of the public hearings, and it said rezoning request. This is actually three separate rezoning requests. It needs to be specified that way.
Agree?
Second. Second motion, second.
First and second to re-change the agenda to make item B three separate rezoning requests to be looked at. Have a first and a second, all in favor? All opposed?
Alright, I have one more motion. Under, under legal, under the action agenda, we need to add a new section in there. We have to do something with this, these public hearings. We have to take an action on that. It's either gotta be approved, disapproved, or tabled. So, I make a motion that we add an item there so that we can discuss the disposition of that.
For the three above, you're talking, for B, correct?
Yes, for all three of those.
Okay, we'll make that, okay. So, are we gonna move B?
We won't move it. We'll just actually, we're gonna create a new item under seven C. So, it'll actually be seven C two. Two, three, four, and five.
Right.
Second.
First and second to move and add section, subsequent C two of the other rezoning request to be discussed at this point. Have a first, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
The reason for this is if we don't do that, there'll become legal ground to appear if we really turn it down.
Yep, we need to, we need to sit through and be done with it. I agree. Now, if I get everybody to stand up, if you want me to pledge allegiance, I appreciate it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Lincoln is not here.
He's not. We could go ahead and do the public hearing, knowing that it's required by the law.
Okay. That raises the public hearing. A is close out the commercial demolition grant.
Excuse me.
Oh, yeah, sure. And what do we need to do to do that exactly?
So, this is just an open public hearing. If anybody has any questions or comments about the commercial grants.
Complaints, whatever, about the demolition grant that we did. This is to close it out. That was where we had, did the demo, commercial demo of two properties. There were three originally. One was done by the owner at the nursery. The second was Stowers' building over here that got cleaned up. And then the third, that everybody really notices, that the old Marigan's building that it'd be.
Have we been waiting for this at this time?
Uh, yes. Yes, we ever see that.
We still need that to close it out.
Right. Right.
Does the state committee did a final on it to make sure it went good?
Lincoln, yeah, Lincoln came and did a final walkthrough. We sent pictures along the way. We sent pictures of the final product as well, Ralph.
So, I think this is for us to be able to write the checks and pay J.D. Holman still.
But we've already, we've already made everything, and then we've been paying the state.
This is a final, close out mission. There's no, there's no public or individual complaints or thoughts against the closing out the project.
Right.
Right?
Right.
By no one bringing that up, I would say that that would close.
We still have to open it.
I thought you put that open.
I did open it. It closes out the commercial, we gotta ask if anybody got anything to say. It's open at this time. We don't have anybody, so without anything, I'd say the close of public hearing on the commercial demolition project. Lincoln will be real bad to be done with that. We will be too.
So, the second is in the order that they are unhappy?
Okay. The second's the rezoning request for, from Darren Adams. Instead of being one, it's three different rezoning requests that he filed.
And we have to do three public hearings.
And we'll have to do three public hearings on the three different tracts of property that he's requesting, okay? What I will say about this is, we looked at it. There's been a lot of feedback from the public in the past at planning zoning, as well as in council meetings we've had. So, I think that we understand the passion, and everybody's welcome to speak. I'd like for you to keep it to a couple of minutes if you could, because we've been around the horn on this one pretty good. If you have anything new, other than to say, "I'm against it," or "I'm for it," and give me a brief statement, or us a brief statement of what that's, you know, what that constitutes, that'd be great. But I think that we've looked at this as pretty, pretty much a point that we're ready to move forward and get on with, moving forward with the city at that point. So, whoever would like to come up and speak is welcome to. The first track that we'll talk about is, request rezoning from R1 to R3 of the parcel of real estate located at Southwest Circle. Lots 19 through 22, and the land and the ceiling units of Centray of 70 by 105 feet is what I have here in front of me. So, that would be the property down Southwest Circle and the house that sits there, right? Is that what's what we're talking about? So, we're talking about that section of it, okay? Which in the past, we, because it was not separated, we couldn't vote on it legally the way it was. It has to be separated out into three rezoning requests. So, at that time, we had voted to not allow it from R1 to R3. And so, I would say that if there's anybody here that has things to support us reconsidering that, or other things to add, I would, I would welcome discussion. I mean, I don't think anything's changed. I'm not trying to, I'm just saying, if you've got something to talk about that you, on the other side of the fence, because we've already been down the road, and this one we talked about a lot. So, you're welcome to come up. If you come up, please state your name and your address, and you're welcome to address us for that property. I don't have anybody coming up at this time for...
If you weren't there, there was an awesome presentation made.
I heard all about it, and it was, I wanna, I do want to say that I heard about the presentations and the passion in the, that was in the, I take it, our, our meeting of the...
Planning zoning.
Planning zoning. We've had people who are impassioned coming up here, speaking to us as a group of decision makers, ordinances of what we approve and what we allow to the city. And I want to thank you folks, not just the folks that are here, but there've been a lot of people in here that have come up and did a lot of footwork, and had a lot of care about the community and their residential area that they live in. So, I want you to know that that goes a long way, and I heard a lot of really good things, I think. I've actually spoke to a couple of you, what I've heard. So, thank you for being involved and caring, and making other people educated in the way. We need a lot more of that, so thank you for that. So, yeah, absolutely, good point. So, we're at this one. Anything else to discuss about Southwest Circle? Okay, we'll close that hearing, public hearing, and we'll move on to the second public hearing, which will be... Okay. And this would be for, is this the lot? Or where is this one at?
It is the lot.
Right next to Southwest Circle, right?
It's right on Alco Street, and it, it's not the lot that includes the trailer, where the trailers are. It's right, it joins it. It's right there. It actually has a shape, or even a shed on it.
Comes up the utility easement, where the shed is.
Yeah.
So, it's west of the trailer park. So, what we're talking about here, rezoning, west of the trailer park, where the easement runs for utilities in the back, where there's a, where there's a shed that's on that property. That shed's the one we're talking about that Mr. Adams owns now at this point, and development of it.
There they include, is it two lots?
It just says it's the 70 by 105.
It says, it says, it does say it's three. It says lots 19 through 22.
Uh, but this is...
But is that over, that's Southwest Circle?
So, the 19 through 22 was everything. It's south, it's all Southwest Circle, so that was everything. But this is just that, where the...
That piece on the easement on the west side is what this is for.
From Lynn Hurst's ad?
No. We were a little bit out of order.
So, is it still just one lot you're talking about?
It's still, yeah.
It's one lot.
It's 70 by 105.
70 by 105 foot lot. Yep. It's the one lot on Alco Street. That would be west of the trailers. That lot is 70 by 105. Any discussion on that in the open session? Well, close that. The public hearing be closed, whereas that part of the property, and this be our third one?
Yes. This is that Lakeview.
Okay, this is the trailer park, if everybody remembers it. We'll open the public hearing on Lynn Hurst Edition Block A, lots one and two. That is at Lakeview, the corner of Lakeview and Jefferson there, where the trailers, I think there was four trailers in there, if I remember correctly. That's what that property's about. If anybody, that's to rezon it from R1 to R3, at that, that area there. That's the third public hearing we're having right now. Any comments about that? Okay?
So, on Lakeview and where, sir?
Lakeview and Jefferson.
Lakeview and Allen.
Allen, excuse me. Jefferson, yeah, yeah, Allen. Yeah, Lakeview and Allen. So, I have none, and I will close the public hearing on that parcel, which concludes the public hearings for B. Just general comments from the citizens at this point. Okay?
I've got one. Is it, but it's not necessarily just about the rezoning. This might be something else. Is it, is there...
Just come up, just come up, tell us what's on your mind, okay? No problem. I know who you are, that we all probably knew.
Now, you saw me at the end.
I'm trying to get to where I do this the proper way. I'm getting better than any of you.
Yeah, thank you. Connie Troyer, 802 South Allen. Question was, is there a timeframe on him, excuse me, on the current property being cleaned up? And, I mean, it's just, it's just such an eyesore now, and particularly the property up at Allen and Lakeview. It looks like they've just started taking stuff out, but yet, nothing has been done to, quote, "clean it up." And then, anyway, just, just in general, you know, I just think it's just such an eyesore and such a black eye for people that come into Centray.
Well, I think in general, I think part of us getting through the rezoning, and what it looked like, what you could do with the property, in fairness, right? Now that that's being done, and will be done, then there may be an expectation, just like we have for any of the other developing, or any other homes, or individuals that own a house, for there'd be an expectation of improvement, if it's, you can see.
Yeah, that's what I was asking about. Alright, thank you.
Well, there could be at this time of year, with developing, I would, I would say that, just to say, it becomes difficult this time of year to do some of the things you need to do to, as far as having bought a property, going to develop it, and get some things out. So, in fairness, we will probably take that into consideration as well, as to the fact that it's, I don't know, ground free froze now, and...
Sure. Okay.
Yeah, we'll hit.
My name's Brandon Moss, and I live at 200 Alco Street. I just want to say that he's kind of made more of a mess by cutting down all the trees and kind of leaving some things and burning stuff. And I know he's, you know, starting on it, but he has, I don't know if you guys, maybe most of you all know this, but he has put the Alco side back up for sale, and the Lakeview, and not the, the Southwest Circle side up. So, I don't know if you all know that.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I was gonna ask you about that.
So, we're closed out on, any other comments from the citizens?
Well, what, just when has this been voted on? I mean, when will we know for sure?
Tonight.
Tonight. That's what we moved down to the two, three, and four.
Okay.
Okay. We had to separate a bill to do that, though. So, we had public hearings. League, we're gonna have the public hearings first, and then we'll do that next week, if we move it to that. Then we'll close. Some comments from the citizens, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Approved as a group, unless separate or fit, more and more of the Alderman, overall the base we have. A is minutes of prior meetings, Board Alderman, December 16th, 20th, and 27th, 2019, January 6th, and 13th, 2020. That's A. B would be minutes of the Public Works, the Public Utilities Committee meeting, January 13th, 2020. C would be minutes of the General Government Public Safety Committee meeting, January 13th, 2020. And then we have reports, the Treasurer and Collectors reports, December 2019 financial statements, and number three is activity reports. So, if you would like to have that time to take a look at a minute, and see if there's anything that jumps out you would like to discuss.
Hello, sorry we dropped that. We're looking at the consent agenda, and I want to pitch in on speaker.
You're right, if you have any.
Yes, sir. If you have any, if you will. I'm commotion, we approve the consent agenda as published.
I have a first and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. That moves us down to accounts payable over $1,250, equaling $766,245.90, if I remember correctly. Alderman Borman asked a question or two about it being that much, and we kind of got into that, I think, the other day. If there's any other questions about that, please take a look. We had some unusual things that we usually don't see in that bucket of money that we've spent, that were three large POs for payments.
What was wrong with the bucket, Chuck? Your prayers.
They had to reline the bucket, and fix some of the controls on it.
A commotion, we approve the accounts payable over $1,250, and the grand total amount of $766,245.90. Second.
I have a first and a second from Mr. Hudson. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Now, that moves us down to the action agenda. First thing that we have, we have in finance, number one, authorize an intra-fund transfer from the sanitation fund and the parks and recreation fund to pay for purchase of property located at 1401 East Highway 22, resolution. If you would, can I get somebody to read it, read that? Mr. Hudson?
Bill number?
Two, three, three, two.
Move the bill number two, three, three, two, to be given its first and only reading, by Title only.
Second. The first. The second. Is this roll call vote?
All in.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes.
A resolution authorizing the intra-fund transfer of funds from the city's sanitation fund to the Parks and Rec Fund, and to transfer funds from the Parks and Recreation Fund to pay for the purchase of property located at 1401 East Highway 22, Centray, Missouri. I move the bill number two, three, three, to be adopted by roll call vote.
Second. I have a first and a second. All, roll call vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, roll call vote, Tara.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Borman?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Okay, bill number two, three, three, two, passes, resolution number?
R dash two zero dash zero one.
Let's decide, you get your transfer, sir.
$104,260.
Thank you.
I could've got closed, but I couldn't got that closed. Permits and licensing is B. We don't have any, unless anybody else has something. That brings us to C, legal. Document scan ordinance, offenses unauthoritized, and this one, ordinance violation, bureau clerk that can be paid before court, amounts of fines imposed for such offenses. All that being said, we talked about this one, so if I could get Alderman Borman, would you read that, read us into that, please?
Sure. Resolution two, our, bill number, please?
Two, three, three, three.
I make a motion that we adopt, uh, this bill. Let me, let me look at what I'm reading. A lot of my credit card.
Hey, I'm wearing all of them.
The bill number two, three, 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 be given its first and only reading by roll call vote.
Title.
By Title only.
Second. Have a first and a second. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We'll hit.
A resolution adopting a schedule of ordinance offenses under the authority of municipal compliance, or municipal ordinance violations, bureau clerk that can be paid before the court, and amounts of fines imposed for such offenses. I move that bill number two, three, 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 be adopted by roll call vote.
Second. Have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Roll call vote, Tara.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Borman?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Bill number two, three, 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 passes, resolution number?
R dash two zero dash zero two.
Now, that puts us down to C two, which is the three tracts.
This is the first one.
How do we read into this thing?
So, we would just need discussion, and then someone would make a motion on how they would like to proceed.
Okay. Well, this here is the request from Adams through Thomas and Owens, for rezoning to R1 to R3 of parcel of real estate located at Lynn Hurst Edition Block...
Sorry. The first public hearing we did was for...
Southwest Circle, okay. So, we've got to turn the page over, excuse me. This will be for R1 to R3, for Southwest Circle, lots 19 through 22. I welcome further discussion, if need be.
Remind me, what was P&amp;Z's recommendation?
No, P&amp;Z, they denied. There was a very good presentation on this, but it being spot zoning, spot zoning per se is not bad, necessarily. It becomes bad if it doesn't meet the goal for what you're trying to accomplish. In this case, this is an area that's completely surrounded by R1 zoning. The infrastructure was built for R1 zoning. If you start putting something in more dense, then the city could be obligated at some future date to upgrade the suburbs and the water lines in order to service this area. The streets aren't in very good shape, they need to be upgraded anyway, but, I mean, they're, they're two-lane streets out there, with very, very little room for parking without getting into the parking lanes, so...
This is the one we had overwhelming, 70% of the citizens.
And all the neighbors came out there, and they're opposed to this. Sufficient of them that makes the suburban majority require in order to vote to improve this. With that being the case, I'll make a motion that we deny the request.
Second. I have a first and a second to deny Southwest Circle, lots 19 through 22, by Darren Adams for, Adams Real Estate, for, from R1 to R3. All in favor, is this roll call, or...
It's roll call.
Okay, so I...
Or it should be a roll call.
I'll take a, all in favor of taking the, I've had a first and a second.
The vote is to deny it.
Yes, yeah. So, I have a first and a second, so roll call vote. Or all in favor?
No, well, we give the...
We have the motion.
Do the motion, for the motion. So, all in favor of the motion?
Yes.
Okay, all opposed? And now, roll call vote, Tara.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Borman?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Magley?
Yes. Okay, now do we...
So, this is the second one?
That's the one that, okay. Okay, that brings us to Parcels Two. Request rezoning from R1 to R3, the parcel recently located at, this is the 70 by, single piece, the 70 by 105 feet on the Alco Street. And it would be the west lot with the garage, all that that we talked about. Opened up for discussion or motions.
Again, basically the same argument applies, and we make a motion that we deny the request.
A first and a second to deny the request, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, if I have a roll call up there.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Borman?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Magley?
No.
Okay. It's denied, request for R1 to R3 of the 70 by 105 foot lot. So, that's done. Now, we're here. The third one is request zoning from R1 to R3 of parcel of real estate located at Lynn Hurst Edition Block A, lots one and two. That would be open to discussion or a motion.
Once again, oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead, I was just gonna ask you.
Once again, we have pretty much the same conditions as before. The street is a better street, but it's a narrow street, even though it's got curb and gutter, where it's got no, a lot of street parties available there. You know, once again, all in agreement, it applies, and I would make a motion to deny.
And the motion's been made, I would say, too, that we have to be very, because spots only can be okay, but we have to be very, very careful, because if it's a slippery slope once you do it, you set a precedent, and it's legally, it's hard to not tell somebody no at that point, if this, if this is...
That's right. If enough of these get passed this way, then really, nobody has any safety in what they buy, because, you know, you could get something, somebody else could buy it, tear a house down, several miles down, and ask for apartments, and you'd have a harder time to disprove it.
So, I have a motion.
Second, you're welcome.
Second, to vote against my Chris Edition Block A. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
All opposed? Roll call vote, Tara, please.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Borman?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Okay. Then, motion passes not to allow R1 to R3 for the Lynn Hurst Edition Block A, lots one and two. Now, we'll move on to, uh, eight, purchasing. Authorizing the transfer $5,000 from the Park Sale Tax Fund, the Park Fund, towards the purchase price of the golf course. Motion.
This one has been called the Parcels Act, but I thought that we had discussed using, toward the purchase of the $65,000, we, the first fortune, let me out, let me out, to transfer officially.
Second. Motion, first and a second, to transfer the $65,000 from the Park, Sales Tax Fund, the Park Fund, towards the purchase price of the golf course. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Uh, number nine, old business. Do we have any old business to rehash, bring up, talk about?
I did have one thing. A while back we talked, Ken Coolie was in to talk about vacating that alley out there. Have we done anything with that?
Sidney, do you remember that conversation? I don't remember how we left it. I was thinking, I know that we discussed it. We talked about it several times. Do you know the property I'm talking about?
Yeah, the property where basically there's been a couple purchases of lots and there's been some murders of lots out there and the non-use of the roadway. Is that correct?
Yes.
So what was Gorman's question? I'm sorry, I didn't hear the whole question.
Uh, just what, if we've done anything regarding that, I don't, I can't remember where we left it.
As far as I know, there's been, we've made a determination that that was not the city's responsibility to upkeep that particular road or alley. And I don't think any further action was requested by the city unless it's something.
He would like to have that alley vacated and it is a legal alley by prescriptive rights if nothing else.
Yes, if he would like it, if he's going to consent to the vacation, we're not, he's not going to fight it, Alderman Gorman. And absolutely, yes, we could need to go ahead and proceed with vacation and that's what the board would like to do.
He, in addition, that the city would like to keep an easement for ingress and egress that would be specific to the city for maintenance purposes and he is agreeable to that also. So we would need to vacate it, but leave an easement on there for access for the city.
Yeah, and I think we determined there was an easement, but for the purposes of making it like massively clear and yet an easement would need to be prepared and that would need to be done. I would suggest maybe if Alderman Gorman has any suggestions on what are properties that could be done because I can't prepare it because that would be cussing from the property owner towards the city. So, um, an easement would need to be prepared and the vacation request, we will start with the zoning commission and then brought before the board after they review it.
Okay.
So let's go through planning zone.
Yes, correct.
Didn't we take it through planning zone or did we not?
I don't think we did.
I don't think we formally did.
Then we need to put that on the, that's the agenda for the planning zone also. There would have to be a public hearing on that, right Sidney?
Um, yes, that's correct. That is absolutely correct. The public hearing would need to be held. Planning and zoning would need to, uh, send out a notice regarding the potential vacation. Folks would have the opportunity to comment and that could be brought before the board.
So our ordinance says fifteen days notice for a public hearing. Does that apply to this?
Um, anytime now, anytime your ordinance is specific to that and I believe fifteen days notice is required for this as well.
There are some that have less, but I'm not sure if this is one of those.
Yeah, especially since it may impact the surrounding areas. I think fifteen days is the proper notice.
How long is the date we got here?
Well, let me pull off the next one.
Yeah, we can, we can.
This we're gonna have to deal with.
This got to end the world.
Before the, uh.
Well, they're off.
Before the written document.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I don't know if you want that.
Okay.
Got you.
I just wanted to sort of move forward with it.
Do we know it?
Correct. I'm off on that.
Okay. Yeah, we got the next agenda there. Well, the hearing with fifteen days, the next meeting that fits, right? Okay. New business, uh, one, appointments. I don't have any appointments. B would be sitting in his trailer. Fortune?
Oh, my packets, or my reports in the packet. If you have any questions, let me know.
Any questions, folks? C would be our city attorney. Welcome back.
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I'm not personally there.
Uh, they had their third rec on Highway Seventy, so I think it's probably good that you did come.
Yeah, it's, I think it's still closed down. I think the old forty highway trying to route through the building would get in a strike too. The only update I would offer for the board is myself and Judge Stephanie Morrell will be meeting on Monday, which is our regular municipal court date. So we are discussing a request by both her and the city to potentially move our municipal court date to the third Monday of the month. Currently, we need the fourth Monday of the month. Now it consolidates municipal court on the same day as your board, Alderman meeting. It should help alleviate the shut-off notice day plus trying to run municipal court, which kind of gives the front office ladies very busy on State Bay. And also this will help out Judge Morrell. She is being assigned more pro-late matters. My understanding is that the court is looking at that for the Monday. So appears to be a good move for all involved and if it takes effect, it would take effect in April of this year. And again, I would be moving it to the third Monday of the month.
Which I'm usually in town. I was on the third Monday, so I do like to come up and sit down on that if I'm, I'm gonna be in town this time, so I kind of enjoy coming up there to see what's going on. Get a pulse of what, who our people are that maybe we need to do other things with potentially. Yeah, we, Lincoln, we had the, uh, earlier, uh, we had the, uh, the hearing for the closeout of.
Mm-hmm. Were there any comments? I guess that's my only question.
No, no.
So I can give a quick.
Sure.
Quick summary. Yeah. My apologies, I.
No, no problem.
Left my dome light on today and came out and it was, my car was dead, so.
I know.
I gotta go, but.
We find you usually be pretty efficient, so we'll let you go.
Yeah, just, just a quick thing. So as you, yeah, there were two public hearings required. The one you just had was the second of the public hearings required for CDPG. Um, demolition was completed, all three structures at once at East Railroad through nineteen North Jenkins, six twenty-seven. West Singleton was dropped from the project before bidding, so everything was fine there. Total project budget was a hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars for CDPG money. A hundred and twenty-two thousand was set aside for demolition. Only seventy-eight thousand was required, so the remainder amount will be de-allocated and sent back to CDPG. Again, this only question I had was, uh, was the city satisfied with the cornets cleaning up their property? Did that meet your satisfaction?
Where we went and inspected it. That was part of the provision. We want to go look at.
I might suggest putting some kind of documentation, whether it's that the city approves of what they have completed, so we can stick it in the file for closeout.
Absolutely.
Uh, I have a monitoring scheduled with Ryan Reed at our office where I have all of the documentation on January thirty-first. So they will come by and basically go through the whole project file. They do it with every project when it, once it's reached eighty percent completion. Make sure all the documentation is there for the city. The one things, I think about the only thing that I've got left on my checklist before he comes is the final financial documentation from the city. So the bank records, clear checks, all that kind of stuff. And so I'll finish up the closeout paperwork. Once the hearing is, or once the monitoring with Ryan is complete, I will mail that to you, sign all that stuff. Our final request for funds is in there. And the only thing that's left is thirty-six hundred and twenty dollars for our closeout administration. So you'll submit that along with everything to the state. They'll process it. You want to try to get that in by February twenty-second, before February twenty-second if you can, so that you can be cleared out by March first. Uh, that's kind of their deadline for closing books on projects for the year before they open up the new grant round. And if we can get all your projects off the board before that, you guys will be free and clear if you choose to pursue money in the coming rounds. Other than that, that's about, that's about all I've got. You have any questions for me?
No, I have a question for you. So we have to have that come through to prove the thirty-six hundred dollars to close out that or what?
Um, you're authorized to sign the documents, so that's.
That's why I asked a question in front of everybody, just to know when you're going to get it cleaned up.
What was the date?
Uh, February twenty-second is when it needs to be in CDPG's hands to close it all out. That's when they.
Just thinking our next meeting's gonna be will be eighteen. So that puts us way close to twenty-second.
Yeah.
We'll have it all done before then.
That's what I'm saying. We'll make sure we go through that.
Yeah, I think authorized signatures on the RFF are, are you and Mike, right?
Oh, that's right.
Yeah. Yeah, you have to approve them signing stuff, so.
Just want to make sure when they get close, you tell them something.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks for all your help actually as well through the process and.
Yes.
Putting up all my questions and stuff that I.
Uh, so there is just something else to be aware of. Uh, the state, so this isn't us really, but we've been notified as a potential. The state is being audited by HUD, so the state CDPG program. They will be here in late March reviewing projects in mid Missouri. I don't know if that will include us. We won't get notice about that until March. Your project may or may not be included in that federal audit. But at that time, I would contact Heather and we'd set up and basically have her and I both there together to be able to answer any questions about the project. But again, I don't know what projects they're gonna select or even if they are gonna select any of our projects. This is a CDPG audit, not a mid-mo audit, but we can be rolled into that because of the state, so.
I feel confident there's nothing worth that.
Yeah.
Good. Anything else?
Thank you, Lincoln.
Thank you.
Yeah, we really appreciate you. We really do. Thank you. City clerk, do you have anything? That brings us to closed session. We, uh, we're going to closed session for number one. If I could get Alderman Rogers to read us into closed session.
Make a motion to go into closed session.
Have a second.
Go ahead.
The first and second go to closed session. All in favor?
If we read on.
Can we read all of it?
Just one.
Just one?
Where's the one for Alderman?
During this meeting, the board of Alderman may elect to go into closed session and hold a closed vote. And the purpose of such closed session and closed vote shall be, number one, as provided for under section six, one, zero, point, zero, two, one, vision one of the revised statutes in Missouri for legal actions, causes of actions or litigation involving a public government body, governmental body, and any confidential or privileged communication between a public government body or its representatives and its attorneys.
The second is this. Roll call, roll call. Jared, please.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Watkins?
Four.
Alderman Gorman?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah, alright. That passes. We move on to closed session. Uh, James, I don't think this is a long session at all.
Thank you, Alan.
Careful, man. You didn't even read it.
See them all.
Well, don't get me wrong, you've been doing a lot of reading the lines and acting here. I want you to read.
How you doing, sir?
Good, how are you?
Throw in a. Were you at the Arthur speech? Was chief? I was at the school board meeting. I heard about it, listened to it on YouTube and I wanted to see Bob clarify something for him here if I needed to call him. Oh, Major Tom. It sounded like Arthur said that his son had been held at gunpoint by law enforcement. And Arthur has the ability to stretch things once in a while, receive them differently than other people soon. But I thought I'd find out about that. And just his voice and the recording set up here, he might not actually have said what I thought he said.
He probably pretty much shut it down the next day. From work. And on your stand, uh, was up there, up in the high red landing. Um, it was so far out there that it's certain, very rare. Something about tunnels. And now, and actually can't start it on that, and. But. We started on down there. I can understand he's not the most thoughtful person. I don't have a problem with it. Very favorable, a long, long time ago on the shot. Same people, even, but I couldn't stop back then. Which I'm like, actually, seven, seven. But, um, my name is William. I think he was, he was, you know, I don't know how much of a, uh, uh. As long as, as long as. He changed everything that he says. I get one, I get one of the people says, it's, that's, you know. Delores is, yeah, hard to find examples. There's some people smart. Almost so smart. That common sense about the other. Arthur is walking, like, example. Thinking he's smart. I can tell Arthur's a devil. Oh, yeah. Show the way, but trying to be all right. I, I don't think Arthur is a threat. I'm gonna get. That's my girl. Some of the people are officers. Yeah, I've counted now where no one officer will ever be a part of that. It's kind of true officer will all die. But I don't know how much of it is you, how much of it is other people stirring that pot? There, there, there's a problem there. Washington, West Side, and, um, nine plus count, especially. And it's like, a lot of the viewers that were here were former publisher of First, like, Art Charlie. He wanted to get Charlie wound up already, and he was terrible, he was jealous. Something. He occurs, I'm not gonna tell Charlie, and I'm sitting downstairs in a little building, and I was coming down from upstairs. Jamie, go out and ask Brad Forrest why he's telling all these people lies. Go ask, go ask Lynn Behrens why the hell he's making this guy tear up the perfect, the sidewalk, etc., etc. That's all bad. It is. That's all true, I think. There's a small group of people down there, and I feel they want, they're, they're, everything, everything kills them because, um, I generally, I used to remember, uh, said something, maybe that wasn't fire, but it was smoke. He's always.
I still believe that about Danny, but I believe in us.
I don't believe it. Oh, I don't, I don't understand that the lawsuit doesn't help. Far too much. Sis, it's not really the right word, but. Not sure. I, I don't care very at all. Arthur, uh, okay. There's always something, what he says. He may get distracted by, hmm, checking, checking. Out the left field. Well, he starts out with a, a clear picture. So. I think it's a lot of people bearing love to it, like it was divorce. Yeah. But really throwing it further. I can understand. Yeah, frankly, it's gonna be up to him whether he asks for a license or doesn't. I don't think, well, I think eventually something's wrong to have. I wish he would ask for a license. But I would offer help, but it's got one last, I think it'll take long. There, there's always something that looks at. I hope that this, I hope that this, unfortunately, is a point in the summer. All men sit down. I, I can't, I don't know. Last time I saw, I was, uh. I don't think it was, because the way it sounds, it's, yeah, it's, yeah, it's down before asking, and it's something. He said, well, 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 all of a sudden, I'm back in the sunset. Uh, he, in his first one, he, he called his friend, he called a bunch of friends. a, 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 a,